A regular meeting of the Delta County Commissioners-
I don't think that microphone is on.
There it is.
Yep, yep, there you go.
Okay. A regular meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is being held this night pursuant to the following call. In the letter to the Commissioners dated January 16th, 2025, and reading as follows: Dear Commissioners, The Delta County Board of Commissioners will meet on Tuesday, January 21st at 5:15 p.m. in the Service Center Conference Room. Sincerely yours, Nancy Turgot Rocky, Delta County Clerk. Please rise for a word of prayer. Lord, as we begin this meeting, we are thankful for our many blessings. We ask for your guidance to help our Commissioners make decisions in the best interest of the citizens they serve, and, Lord, we pray for the safety of our military men and women. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner Melner.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Van Genhoven.
Here.
And Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Okay, welcome, everybody. Going on a special orders of business. Number one is the 2025 board meeting assignments.
So you need to assign somebody for the upcap board that was not done the last meeting?
Okay. Upcap.
And I believe there was a request for us to change in the planning commission?
Planning and zoning, there was a conflict, so we'll put Kelly back on planning zoning.
Okay.
And upcap.
Do we know- Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Johnson, is that interesting?
Yeah, I served on it about 12 years ago, so I would take it back. That meets on Thursdays, correct?
I don't know what they're meeting. Everybody grab their books.
I believe it was Thursdays. Is it Wednesday?
I think it is Thursdays, what I remember.
Is that the noon one? I wouldn't be able to do that.
Okay. Commissioner Kelly, would you be interested?
Okay. Yes, yes.
Okay.
Unless if, are the meetings normally on Fridays? I'm just trying to figure it out, because if it's just a conflict for Commissioner Johnson this one time, and he would like to serve on it, I would be more than happy to fill in as a designated, if we could figure out-
If it was always a Friday, I couldn't do it, but if it was a Thursday, I could do it.
Okay, so let's try and figure that out. Not in here.
No. It's not in here.
I don't want that.
Nope.
But why don't we, for now, take the spot, and then we'll, we can reconvene on it? I mean, it is the board chair's pleasure, so if the board chair changes his mind, we just ratify it later on.
Okay, so you want me to go ahead and take it first?
If that's okay.
Yeah, absolutely, yep. But just know that, once I figure, once we figure it out, if you'd like to take it, you can, okay?
Sure.
Okay.
And then, I did have a comment about the planning commission. Now, three years ago, it was decided that we would have two Commissioners on the planning commission. Is it still the pleasure of this board to have two Commissioners on the planning commission, or does this board feel that one is sufficient, once again?
The planning commission, are you on that?
Matt and I were on it.
Yes.
If we take a Commissioner off, then we would have an even number, so would we put another constituent on?
That's, that's the way it was done in the past, but either way, I know, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Is it in the planning and zoning bylaws?
Bylaws.
Bylaws, that, two Commissioners?
And that got changed three years ago, because the Commissioners wanted more of a, more of a decision-making on the planning commission. I remember arguing that everything comes through the board anyway.
I remember.
And so, when everything comes through the board anyways, do we really need two Commissioners driving a more community-based board? And so, my argument was, we didn't, and Mr. Menochter's argument at that time was also that we didn't, but the Commission at that time overruled me, and it was fine, but I bring up that point to the Commission once again.
So there's other boards that do have two Commissioners, such as Airport, Parks and Rec Commission.
Sure.
So I guess I would like to see how many do have two versus how many don't, and what their, you know, bylaw, what the, what the bylaws would be, because I know, like, for the Park and Rec Commission, it's actually stated in the-
CEO.
In the, yeah, but I don't know how, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And this, this just goes back to referencing that, trying to get more, I guess, more cost-effective with our commission, and time-effective, too, where we don't have to have everybody doing one thing, or everybody going to every single possible meeting, or doubling up on things that we don't need to double up on. I mean, it's only 20 bucks plus mileage, but eventually, that'll save us money.
I guess the only question I would have is, if we're challenged by finding, just because of the number right now, if we are challenged by finding participants, maybe having to until we can get another Commissioner, or another planning Commissioner from the community, so that they're not an even number, and it's not gonna, you know, it's not gonna be an impact on voting.
Sure.
So I, I'm fine with it just being one, I agree with you, I don't think it needs to be two, but we don't want their numbers to be an even number at this point. So maybe we move forward with one until, but we have to until they are able to find another-
And it's so hard to find people to do this.
Do you know what the basis is for that person that would fill a Commissioner's spot, then, because isn't it right now that they have one from each district?
Yes.
So then, what would be the guidelines for that sixth person?
Well, it's, it's supposed to be one from each district, however, we've kind, or in the past, we got away from it. It was, it was more, the planning commission, if I remember right, the, it's pretty much the townships that are governed by the planning commission. And so, to have a heavy planning commission board of, let's say, City of Gladstone, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, because they're making rules for people that aren't themselves.
Correct.
So I would be, feel comfortable with somebody, like, kind of doubling up on a township, so it has more representation, because they're making rules for themselves.
So we could maybe perhaps take a recommendation from the Township Association-
That would be great, yeah. That would be great.
And I don't think that it's a requirement that there's one from every district, I don't think that's, I don't think that's right. I think it's, yeah, it's, I believe it states that as long as you've got representation across the UP businesses, and, you know, organizations and townships, and, you know, but it doesn't have to be per district.
Okay, I apologize, because I know that's the way it is with Airport and Parks and Recs, so I made that assumption.
So at the time, we're gonna leave it at two Commissioners for the planning zoning-
Yep.
Until they can find somebody, or the Township Association can find somebody.
Well, we have to look in the bylaws, too, to make sure that we're following everything correctly.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll be back on planning, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And you're gonna be up on upcap, unless it's not every Friday.
On Fridays, okay, got it.
Okay.
Yep, sounds great.
I'm gonna need a motion.
Well, I have two more appointments that need to be made. UP Resource Conservation and Development.
What is that?
I'm unaware who served on that last night.
I believe it's, I don't think there's anything on it.
Let's see, hang on.
I think I got it here.
If I remember right, that was a, just a named position, but they haven't met in a long time.
What, yeah, what do they do?
Okay, so the UP Resource Conservation and Development was Commissioner Crosdale, and the alternate was Commissioner Melner. That's what it was appointed last time.
You already found it then.
Yep.
Okay. Since, if everybody don't mind, I'll take that one, because I don't think there's nothing on it at all.
Okay.
Works for me.
I'm fine with that.
I don't see any, I'm looking at the list, I don't see upcoming meetings scheduled for them, so.
No.
Okay.
I think it's probably a meeting by notice, or whatever, but I've never seen one last year, and I don't think Commissioner Crosdale will ever seen, seen one, either.
And then there also needs to be an alternate.
Who what? Okay.
Yeah, I can take that.
And then, the last one would be Northwoods Rail, we need a second Commissioner.
Yeah, Commissioner Kelly's on the- Who wants to be the second? They'd meet maybe twice a year.
That's in Rhinelander.
Hmm?
It's in Rhinelander.
It's in Rhinelander.
And I believe they have zoom options.
They have zoom options, okay.
Commissioner View went once.
Yep. I know that Commissioner View, when we were making appointments for that, had said, well, that he felt that I should be on it, because I sat on solid waste, and they were looking at expanding the rail for the waste, for the plasma gas station, whatever, but, you know, the, the alternate should have some sort of, I think, backup, so I think you should take it, got it?
Yeah, I could, I can be the alternate.
Yeah.
Okay.
Especially with the zoom option, that's worthwhile.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay. Can I get a motion to accept?
So moved.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Okay, number two, rules and procedures, appointments to boards and committees. Who had that one? Chris?
Is that, is that from my stuff? Okay, we'll just defer on this, because I'm not ready to submit the changes that I have, and hopefully, I'll have them ready for the, I need to give them to you, I think it's like 14, or 10 days in advance, so I'll have them ready for the next meeting.
Okay. Do we need a motion, put that on?
Yeah, we'll just, a motion to defer to the next meeting.
Yeah, motion to table.
I need a-
It's actually a motion to defer.
A motion to defer, apologies.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number five, county board minutes from 1/7/2025. Move approval? Can I get a support?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number six, approval of the agenda. We have two additions. And we're gonna-
Do you have the additions, sir?
Yes. Okay. The first one's gonna be 8.5. It's gonna be a closed session, attorney opinion, MCL 15 dot 268 H.
Okay, so that's agenda item, you're adding 8.5 under new business.
Correct. And then the second addition would be adding number 13, and it's gonna be FOIA, number 25 dash 06.
Then, Mr. Chair, is it going to be, do we know if the opinion's gonna be a long discussion, or should we keep public comment where it is?
I don't believe it's gonna be a long discussion.
Huh?
Okay, keep public comment where it is.
Okay.
Move approval with the amendments.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number seven, presentation of written communications received and forwarded, there was none, I seen. Number eight, reports of standing, sorry, special meetings and others, none. Public comment on agenda items.
Andrea Nomenin, Maple Ridge Township. To the Delta County Commissioners, since Robert Randstadler first got up and gave a speech about me that was utterly devoid of facts, I have been trying to clear my name. I've met roadblock after roadblock, including an over $800 bill for a FOIA. I know what had helped clear up some of the slander against me. This latest batch of FOIAs, though, takes the cake. I strongly believe what happened to me was a retaliatory measure taken by former Commissioner Moyle, because first, I filed a harassment complaint against him, and then I spoke out against him at a public meeting. Recently, I FOIA'd all the emails between David Moyle and Scott Graham, the attorney, as well as all the emails between Robert Randstadler and Scott Graham. I received 10 emails back, very discouraging. However, within those emails was the revelation that Robert Randstadler and Ashley Young allowed Scott Graham access to sensitive security information prior to him having security clearance. Congratulations. In the process of trying to besmirch my name, and to continue besmirching my name, an incompetent airport manager, an incompetent county administrator, and an incompetent attorney all managed to commit a federal security breach. And there is no excuse, this would have been covered in the airport security coordinator training that both Randstadler and Young received. I also sent a FOIA requesting the names of the people interviewed in the investigation, along with the questions that were asked, and any notes taken. The FOIA was denied, and the reason given was, this information doesn't exist. However, that information was clearly laid out in the itemized invoice sent by Scott Graham, showing four separate interviews were conducted. So either the county is paying for things that they did not receive, or I was being lied to. Administrator Young's denial of my FOIA is in direct violation of the Open Meetings Act, and is quite frankly, a liability of the county and a waste of my time. How many Commissioners have accessed this investigation? Do any of the things I mentioned even remotely compel you to do the right thing instead of the easy thing, which is just to do nothing and ignore it like you have been? Laws were broken surrounding this investigation. That should concern you all. I know it concerns me, and I already questioned the validity of what Administrator Young and the county board allowed to be put, allowed me to be put through, or to be put out into the public. And I want you to know, I'm not going away.
Any other public comment on agenda items? Any other public comment on agenda items?
Will Kern, representing, or, of the Airport Advisory Board, and it's regarding the transition over of the manager. Let's see, we have, we have an individual that has, we've been in contact with. Is this the right time to bring this up?
Is it concerning a agenda item?
Yeah, it's the transition, airport transition.
Yeah, you can speak now, or we can call you up when the agenda item happens, if you'd like to speak.
It doesn't matter, you know what I mean?
You can-
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
So we have an individual that's given us four proposals, as far as a transition over period for a manager. We've looked at option three, and had a discussion with him, and as far as what he proposes to do is maintain, he has the qualifications to manage the airport, and he moved to run the airport as is, and then put in, put together a portfolio to attract manager, a manager and assistant over the next year's time. So we have the proposal, and we've been working on a contract with that in place. So I'm just bringing this up to the board right now, and seeing where we can go with this individual in this plan for a transition move forward. So we have somebody in place right now. Right now, without anybody in place, we have a certain amount of time, but to actually get a manager to go through the process of trying to find an airport manager, this three times, in the time allowed right now, isn't, isn't enough time to do the, by the time we do the advertising, get the applicants in, and to get individual in place, is gonna be close to what our, we wouldn't even be able to make it in the 90-day period that's, that we have to do right now, so it's pretty important that we have something in place to move forward. And we have an individual right now that has the qualifications. There's been a little bit of issues with negotiating, but I think those could be worked out, just so that we have somebody to have the airport moving forward. And he also has a development plan to go over two-year period. Anything else that, if there's other questions later on, you have any answers?
Okay. Any other public comment on agenda items? Any other public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on to committee reports, administrator report.
A little bit on what Mr. Kern had talked about earlier, where the interim airport manager search is ongoing. Been working with finance, the members of the advisory board, to explore other suitable candidates. Negotiations with a potential interim manager that he had spoke of earlier has been ongoing also. All qualified applications will be thoroughly reviewed by the hiring committee that the board had already approved back in December. I also created some rubrics to grade the applications and assist in interview processes. For those, I brought them forward to the Personnel Committee, and we just hadn't, we only had an hour time on our last personnel, because there was another meeting scheduled right after ours in the, in the boardroom, so we weren't able to address those. I submitted all the facility, personnel, and financial portions for the trial court's funding that I'd been talking about the last couple times, so all of that information has been submitted to the trial court funding group. This is to help determine a new maintenance of effort. I did receive a notice that our lead attorney from IMAIDC program has resigned, and it'll be effective March 1st. So this position is an administrative position, it's crucial with the program's success, overseeing attorney scheduling, approving attorney invoices, assisting me in applying for the grant and budgeting purposes, and then also, there is some compliance reporting that is needed to be done. So I have contacted our regional manager for assistance on finding a replacement. And then also, I just want to bring up, the Personnel Committee is actively reviewing all of our county policies, which there's quite a few of them, so we're making progress. That'll be out.
Motion to place on file?
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number two, Finance Committee minutes of 1/9/25 and of 1/17/25.
So 1, 1/9 of 25. One of the items that we still have that's still pending will be for the part-time custodian. The other one, which was, suffered, was the per diem travel that will be added, that will be coming to the next finance meeting, and then on, let me go back to 17 here, and then on the 17th, there were two, and the one we'll get into on the transition for the airport, and items, so items 9, 10, and 11 will be addressed in detail. One, which would be in the transition plan, one's for building and zoning, and then the others is for the MERS, and those will be addressed in items 9, 10, and 11.
Can I get a motion, put-
Motion to place on file?
Support?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number three, IT Committee minutes of 1/14/25.
So we met with Brandon and Cody and discussed some possible upgrades. No actions were taken at the meetings, it was just sort of informational, and Brandon is going to be seeking some bid information, so that we have an idea of costs associated with some upgrades. And then I also want to just note that Brandon has completed the process of putting our meeting information online, so we'll be able to fill out our meetings through a form online and submit that, so that we have a digital record, and it'd just be much easier for us to track our, our meetings.
For our expense report.
Our expense reports, yep. And so, that's exciting, that happened today, and that's complete. And then I've got another bit of information to share, but I'll do that on the agenda item later on. So that's it for now.
Can I get a motion, put that on file?
I'll make the motion to put it on file.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number four, Personnel Committee minutes of 1/17/25.
Oh no, you're board chair, I'm the chair.
Okay. I was trying to be pleasant. Okay, so we met on January 17th, Commissioner Johnson and I, for the first time as Personnel. For, under our old business, we did county personnel policies, which will be an ongoing process. Each meeting that we have, we were able to update five policies, which you can see in the, in the report. New business, we were able to get job descriptions for several Veterans Affairs positions, including, including clerical director and VSO, discussed maintenance issues, and then did a travel determination, which will be discussed later. And that's all.
Okay, can I get a motion, put that minutes on file?
Motion to put on file?
Have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number five, departmental updates. Any departmental updates? Seeing none, we'll move on to unfinished business. And that would be Commissioners' travel determination.
I brought this forward to the Personnel Committee, and they have recommended to not reimburse for the meal, but in pay for the hotel stay. We're seeking approval on that recommendation.
Move approval?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. We'll move on to new business, payment of bills.
I've examined all claims presented and recommend payment- I've examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following and that the county clerk be directed to issue orders on the county treasurer to reclaimance for the amounts allowed. Grant total of bills, $592,870, I'm sorry, $887.11 and commissioner expenses of $275.87.
A motion to pay the bills on the sum of $592,887.11 and commissioner expenses of $275.87.
Support.
Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Van Genhoven?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ann Melner?
Yes. Our bills are paid. Move on to number two.
This came through the airport advisory board. It's a recommendation to sign the contract with Mead and Hunt for the design process of the snow removal equipment building.
Move acceptance and encourage signature of the contract.
Can I get a second?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number three, contract Mead Hunt airfield marketing design.
Again, this came from the airport advisory board, recommendation to sign the contract. And it is for the markings as it stated in the title at the, in the airfield.
Motion?
Move approval?
And support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number four, resignation of our boy, Ballski? Sorry if I killed your name. Request for one lump sum payout and fill correction position. I need a motion to accept.
Make the motion to accept and for the request of the lump sum payment and to fill the corrections position as well as send a thank you letter.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number five, LOA Teamsters Road Patrol insurance coverage and transfers.
As you'll see, there has been a change. We had approved this a while back. However, when it was sent down to Teamsters, they did not like the way it was written. And so we're looking to change that. Receive approval from you to change.
I like his updated.
Let's do it.
I'll make a motion then that we accept the insurance coverage for transfers from the Teamsters and Road Patrol in the county.
Support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number six, or number, yeah, number six, LOA asthma. I think I said that right. Circuit court, court reporter.
Judges requesting that this LOA be approved regarding the court reporter. What it does is it closes the gap between base and year one on their years to service percentage increase.
Can I get a motion?
So moved?
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number seven, remote public comment.
That's me. So we have a solution for providing remote public comment. And I'd like to share the idea with the board and get the board's support in moving forward with it. You know, we're all challenged with, you know, attending meetings when we're the, you know, general public. We have children, we have jobs, we have limitations in our ability to drive. We have winter restrictions, we have nighttime. I mean, there's a whole host of reasons why people attend these meetings remotely. And if we look at the data, which at our IT committee meeting, Brandon shared some data with us on the participation through YouTube. And typically it's about two, I think it's about 250 people are viewing, but about 50 of those are actually live during this meeting. So we have more people participating live than we have sitting in the room with us, which just shows that our public, our constituents want to participate. And I think one of the, one of the key parts of participation in your local governance is being able to address your local government. And we can do that through public comment on agenda items or we could do that through general public comment. However, that's not possible right now. And so we, we look to come up with a solution. And what, what we developed was providing two phone numbers. One is a public, or a public comment on agenda items. And the other phone number would be public comment, general public comment. And you would just call and you would leave your, you'd say your name, state your name and leave your comment. And then that just gets played here during the meeting. So that if you want to provide public comment at the end of the meeting, of the meeting you're watching, you have the option to be able to do that. And, and we would just turn the microphone to, to the, the computer that it's going to be being played on. And it's just a simple, just a simple solution. It's $10 a month for the phone number. So it's a very low cost solution. And Brandon tested it out here in this room on Friday this last week. And he said it worked great. There was no problem. You could hear it in the audience and you could hear it on the YouTube live feed very clearly. So I, I would love to try this out and see how it goes. And, you know, give our, our public a chance to participate through remote public comment. So I'm just, I'm looking for support. If you're, if we want to move forward with this, we're ready to go. I don't think we need a motion or anything. It would just be try it out, see if it, if it works for us. If we have any issues at all, it's a, you know, there's no contracts. It's, it would just be a simple, be able to shut it off if it's a problem for us. But I think it's worthwhile giving it a try. So is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, the only thing I would like to see is if we're going to do it like where now people have to sign in, where they're going to list their name and all that, that they would have to preface who that is in their call if they're recording it. Because otherwise we have no idea who that is or how to redirect that.
Right, yep. It would, the, the greeting for the voicemails will state that you have to, if you're leaving public comment for the agenda item, you have to state your name and then you have to speak to what agenda item it is. So you do have to state that. And then in general public comments, you state who, who you are. So same, same as if you were here in person, so.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Give it a shot.
All right.
Yep.
We'll give it a shot then and we'll see how it goes. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for working on that because I know that's something that Commissioner View was really adamant about getting before he left. So thanks for taking that on.
Yeah, maybe he'll be our first public comment. Wouldn't that be fun?
Maybe.
Okay, we will move on to number eight, request to donate sick leave.
Received another request from an employee to donate sick leave to another employer virus. We would just like approval of that request. And then also extend it to any other employees that would like to donate to this.
So moved.
Yeah.
Support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Okay, number eight, five is closed session, attorney opinion. And it's MCL 15 dot 268 and looks like H.
H.
Clarification, is this a written opinion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we do need a roll call vote?
Do you have a second to your motion?
Oh, do I have a?
Second.
Okay.
You're, you're always so fast.
And who was the first? I'm sorry, I was.
I, I did.
Johnson?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Van Genhoven?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ann Melner?
Yes.
Yeah, we are.
Okay.
We're good.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll make the motion that we return from closed session and no decisions were made.
Can I get a support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, motion passed. Number nine, airport transition proposal.
It was recommended by the finance committee at $161,000 max for this individual. However, with our attorney, they would like to review the contract.
Are you just looking for a motion to table?
Yes.
So moved.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, motion passed. Okay, number 10, building zoning request to waive building permit fees.
The ISD is currently doing a project and they have $123, I believe, worth of building permit fees and they're requesting for it to be waived. This was recommended to approve the request from the finance committee.
I'll make the motion that we waive the, what was it, the actual building.
Permit.
Yeah, what was it? It was for $413.
$413.
And $20 for the ISD project.
Support.
Any discussion?
I do believe we have precedence for this too, if I remember right.
We do for townships. We have a policy that municipalities, we waive, but I don't know, maybe schools.
I think we've done it with the ISD before.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, motion passed. Number 11, administration, MERS defined contribution.
So MERS approached me in that there has been some regulation change about employees that may have not filled out their retirement enrollment forms or are transferring from one division to another that unless the employer designates a maximum, it will be 0%. So we're requesting that we change that to the maximum for each of their divisions, allowable for each of the divisions for MERS. And so that's what you'll see attached. There's actually a couple different divisions and they have different percentages.
Can I get a motion? To MERS defined contribution amendment?
Motion to accept the amendment.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, motion passed. Number 12, county personnel policy review.
I would like to defer this until I'm able to make the changes that were recommended from personnel and have it typed up and ready to.
Move to table.
Support.
I have some discussion real quick on that. I would like to add some additional steps to policy review. And I talked with Brandon in IT relative to the additional work that I requested, which We would then make the document accessible and then place it on the internal web server for the county so that the employees would have access to accessible policies and available to them at any time. So, you know, the policies they're governed by would be easily, readily available to them. And instead of waiting until all the policies get done and then IT has to do this, you know, big huge project, we would just do it one at a time. And so it's a very, you know, systematic way for IT to stay up on, on the changes. And, and then the policies will just, you know, slowly be uploaded to the, to the internal web server. So I would make a motion that we add that to the policy review as part of a process.
There's already a motion on the table.
Yeah, I should have a motion.
Yeah.
The table.
Table, sorry.
Yeah, we're on discussion right now.
Absolutely. So we will table, but I just would like to have that as a consideration for when we do the review. So I'll, I'll, after we get done tabling, yeah.
Yeah, you can make another motion after we're done.
Yeah, after we get done tabling, I'll make the second, I'll make my motion.
So we have a motion, we had support?
No, we didn't have support.
Yes.
Yeah, we got support.
Well, I apologize. That's why I was discussing.
Gotcha, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
No, and I would like to make a motion.
Motion passed.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we add the accessibility of these documents, these policy documents, and adding them to the internal web server for acts, ready access for county employees.
I'll support.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, motion passed. Number 13, FOIA number 2506.
Earlier today, we received an appeal on one of our FOIA submissions. I'm requesting that the county ask, I'm sorry, request for a 10-day extension on this.
So moved. I guess support. I'll support.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion. So I have, I have some questions about this because I am new to this investigation and these documents. So I, I have some really general questions and then I'd like to dive a little bit into this. Do we have the, do we have a list of documents that came out of this investigation? From, from, do we have a list of what those documents are?
I had received one request and it was to submit the emails of our previous airport administrator. That is the-
Is that what the FOIA appeal is for?
The FOIA appeal.
Can you, yeah, could you read, could you read what the original FOIA request was? That might help to set the baseline here.
If I could ask the board, would that have a bearing on whether we grant the 10-day extension or whether we ask for that 10-day extension?
It would for me because if, depending on who the person is, I would recuse myself and declare conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you. Administrator Young, do you know who the person would be?
I do.
Are we allowed to disclose that?
I have it right here.
Okay, I'm declaring a conflict of interest and will not participate in this conversation.
So then I would ask the question one more time of this board. Does the, do we really need to know the rest of it to determine? Administration has asked us for 10-day extension and do we need to know any more details to grant that 10-day extension or do we trust that administrator?
I would like to know what the original, so I want to understand what the original request was so that I can better understand what the denial is related to. Like, why are we denying?
Okay.
So why did this appeal come forward in the first place? That's what I think is important to understand. So, I mean, the 10 days may buy us the time that is necessary, but for what?
Right.
That's what I don't understand right now.
So the reason why I'm requesting the 10-day extension is because when we usually receive an appeal, I forward this over to our legal to review and then they give us an opinion and we proceed forward. With having, receiving this appeal four hours prior to this meeting, it did not give legal sufficient time to make that opinion, but I have to address it at the next board meeting, which this is the next board meeting after receiving the appeal.
So the 10-day extension would be for it to go through legal?
Correct.
And to get their opinion?
Right.
Before we would move forward?
So I can share that with the commission.
Okay, so I think that it is important, what I have to say then. Because if we are not going to meet again before you issue, so if you meet with legal to go through whether or not you're going to continue to deny the request, is that, what, what are you meeting with legal about?
It's an opinion for you to determine because now you will have the choice to either, actually Beth will probably, do you have the four of them in front of you? There are options. They can either partially deny, fully deny. Four options are to, number one, reverse the denial, reverse the disclosure. Option number two, uphold the disclosure denial. Option number three, reverse the disclosure denial in part and uphold the disclosure denial in part. Or option number four is issue a notice extending for not more than 10 business days, the period in which you decide which of those three options you're going to use. And so legal's goal would be to review it and then just prepare an opinion. Then that opinion goes, my understanding is that opinion goes where the board reviews that and then the board decides whether they're going to uphold the denial, reverse the denial, or uphold or reverse it in part.
So what was the original request?
It wasn't attached with any of the documents that I have.
The reason that I am asking for discussion on this is because I have experience with FOIA denials and, and the, the liability that we could be placing, the county, the liability that could be placed upon the county by continuing to deny a request that we actually don't have to deny. And so I want to make sure I understand what the original request was and then why we denied the original request. That's what's important to me right now.
The names of the individuals interviewed by attorney Scott Graham in the airport investigation and copies of notes, recordings, and/or summaries of those interviews.
Okay, and why was that denied?
I don't have any such documents.
You don't have any documents?
And I had requested it to attorney Graham.
Okay.
And he said that they were, I believe it was, he owns his notes.
Okay, that's, therein lies the problem. Okay. So we need to be very aware of the Supreme Court case, case law on, this is 2020 BIZIO, and this is the attorney that is serving as counsel for the county is a part of the public body. So if attorney Graham has documents that are not, they're not attorney, and I have to, I wrote it down because I want to be specific, under FOIA case law exempt materials under attorney-client privilege are strictly legal advice. Anything else is not exempt from FOIA. So we are putting ourselves at risk if attorney Graham has documents that he has not provided to us, they're part of our case, we paid for this work product and we don't have those documents. We are putting ourselves at risk because that is not, that is not attorney-client privilege, strictly legal advice. They're simply notes. Those are FOIABLE.
But, Mr. Chair? Isn't that why we are referring to legal though and why we ask for that 10-day extension? Because legal is going to give us, assuming that position, and then we can make our decision from then, or from that decision from legal?
Possibly. I want to make sure that this is, that legal is looking at this particular case law because it is extremely important. And, and if those documents exist and we don't have them, just because we don't have them in our possession does not mean that they're not FOIABLE. They're, they're not exempt.
That, that case-
Even though we don't ha, hold them.
That case I had previously brought up over, deal with that same individual.
We had went into, we had discussed this already because it's determining the work product of the employee, or of the attorney, sorry, not employee.
Right, and this is where I'm, I really want us to be very careful because Graham may say something, but it doesn't mean that it's, it's, just because he says they're his, not ours, doesn't necessarily hold water. So I want us to be very careful because we are, we are potentially getting ourselves into hot water.
And that's why I'm seeking for a 10-day extension so I can give my legal time to review all of this and provide an opinion.
That would be, that would be great. I think that's a good idea then, yeah.
So that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I think that's a... And the only reason that you denied it is because you don't have, you don't hold it, you don't have it.
Right, and he had, I wrote an email because this was requested from Commissioner Wagenhoven back in July and he said, "I will not provide my work product."
So just, just to note, if we hold up this denial? If we, no, not at all, no.
No, I said, never mind.
If we hold up this denial and we are, there is a challenge to that, a legal challenge to that, just know that the result, the FOIA law requires a judicial review. So the files will have to be provided by Graham and a judge will determine whether or not they are exempt or non-exempt.
Correct.
So it's, that's, that would be the next recourse, so.
That is in our policy for FOIAs, yes. All of that is explained.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Nope.
Nancy, do we have a?
Yep, there's a motion by Johnson and seconded by Melner for the 10-day extension.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Hey. Let's see here, general public comment.
Andrea Numelin, Maple Ridge Township. So I, I appreciate your words, Christine, as we go through this process. I was outraged when I saw the reason my FOIA was denied, that the documents do not exist when clearly in the itemized bill from attorney Graham, interviews are listed. I have, this isn't the first time I have asked for information along those same lines and been denied. So you can see, like, there, there truly is a liability. I, I am not vindictive, I am not seeking any kind of compensation. I want the truth out. Matt, you haven't, you haven't contributed anything to, like, getting any of this information brought forward. I really take offense to you saying that you offered up the Supreme Court case for BIZIO. I, whatever, that, I cited that in my response today too. I was very glad to hear you bring that up as well. This process has been frustrating from start to finish. I think you can get the picture of why I am so irate at this moment. I have had every single door closed in my face to try to get the truth out and nobody appears seems to care. I mean, I know we've got new commissioners, you guys are obviously excluded. I've, I worked with Kelly before she became a commissioner, obviously that had to end after she assumed the role. So to have these doors shut in my face the way they have been and my name drug through the mud is disgusting to me. And I think you're kind of getting a picture, Christine. I can't even tell you how much I appreciate what you just said. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I'm right here on chair of the airport advisory board. I pretty much have one request. You guys went into executive session to discuss the contract proposal for our interim manager. My ask of you guys is if that starts to fall through, please let us know so we can start working on another option for an interim because I don't want to put us in a position where we don't have an interim because it's not an if, it's a when. The message from this board is going to be pick from who you have. And we've done that twice and it hasn't worked out. I don't want to do it again.
Any other general public comment? Any other general public comment? Any other general public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to commissioner comments. Commissioner Johnson?
I'll defer at this time.
Commissioner Williams?
I just have a couple of things. I was at Ford River Township's board meeting last night and found out that the township zoning administrator has to resign from his position for work-related issues. So that position is going to be open to the public here very soon. So if you know anybody who's interested in becoming a zoning administrator, have them check out the website or call the township office for more information. And then I believe I mentioned this at the last meeting, but I just want to bring it back up and let people know the dates and the, and the times. Michigan State Extension will be offering onsite at the Escanaba Township Hall citizen planner training. So anyone out there that is a planning commissioner or a zoning administrator or anyone who's doing even master plans for that, for that matter, this citizen planner program is exceptional. It, it leads to certification at the end. It'll be in-person at the Escanaba Township Hall, April 10th, 17th, 24th, and then May 1st, 8th, and 15th. And those sessions are from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM and it's half price. It's $125 and it's normally $250 per person. So an exceptional program and get the word out there for, for folks that you know that might be able to attend. Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes, I would just like to remind all organizations and nonprofits that our RFP for opioid funds is now available on our website, deltacountymi.gov. We are accepting applications through March 31st for funds up to $30,000. It is a short grant timeframe, but we are highly encouraging everyone to apply who is qualified to do so. We want to get those funds out into the community as quickly as, as possible. That's all I have, thank you.
Mine was actually short, although my normal scheduled meetings in there were pushed back, obviously either A due to weather or B last week with me being sick. So in regard to Commissioner Williams mentioning the citizen planner course, it is absolutely amazing. If you have the opportunity to take it, it can't be understated how incredibly done that course is. The individuals are super knowledgeable and the amount you're going to learn is, is unreal. So especially with the price being half and it's in our own backyard, which is certainly not, definitely if you're even remotely considering helping out in planning, definitely take the, the course. It's definitely worth your while.
Nancy?
Nothing for me.
Minister Young?
I have nothing.
And myself?
Pat deferred.
I'll, I would, I guess I will say, Commissioner Wagenhoven, I appreciate you stating the conflict of interest. It's been something that hasn't happened in a long time, so I appreciate you taking that. that time. I know it's difficult to see a friend or family member go through something rough and it is good to see that you, you did that, so I appreciate that.
Okay. Myself?
I'm sorry, could I just say one more thing?
Yes.
I apologize. We had a former commissioner send in an application for boards and I'm just wondering why that wasn't on the agenda this evening.
I have not been notified that he sent it or.
I gave it to Tracy today.
Oh, just today?
Just today.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Myself, I have nothing. So the meeting schedule, we are going to have a special board meeting on 1/30/2025 at 5:15 right here. We are going to have a regular board meeting, the commissioners on 2/4/25 at 5:15 in the service center. Another board of commissioners meeting on 2/18/25 at 5:15 in the service center. And the last one would be on 3/4, 5:15 at 5:15 in, in the service center. 30-day notices, there's opioid task, task force?
Yes, we're looking for a person to fill Judge Parks's seat, so it has to be a community leader or.
Nonprofit.
Nonprofit, yes.
Okay. Any motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.